Good evening, Walton. To the zoning board of appeals meeting for February 27th at 7:02 PM here in Town Hall, Room 124. This meeting is being audio and video recorded per the open meeting laws of the state of Massachusetts. Tonight, we have two public hearings. We're going to continue 71 River Road at 7:03 PM, and then we will continue the Village Green, the enclave after that. So at this time, let's continue the hearing for 71 River Road. The last time we left off, we had a couple of concerns, a couple of members had concerns whether or not the joining of these properties, these parcels of lands was allowable. I think we talked about the merger doctrine, and I think Bob Bullock weighed in on that, basically stating that once these three properties are combined, that they become one. And I think, in this case, where they're building a house on these properties, I don't think our counselors can elaborate on that, there's no concern, because they're not trying to protect any one of these three non-conforming lots. They will become one lot with one house. And this new house on this new lot will be less non-conforming than the existing house on these lots, which, again, one of our tenants of zoning is to remove or to minimize non-conformity. Do you have anything to add to that? I know the applicant did not have a chance to adjust their legend. I think, and I think we can do that here tonight if we want to show with an asterisk on the rear setback, that this is actually, this property will actually have two front setbacks at 50 feet. Regardless of whether it's 50 or 25, the new home is still less non-conforming than the existing. Do you have anything to add to that?
I just have a question. Where are the, there's now three lots.
You have to grab the mic.
Where there are three lots now, and there will be one, when does that process need to be done? When do we need to do that? Is that prior to building permit?
Yes, I would say combine the three lots and then apply for your demolition permit and your construction permit.
Are you gonna, are you gonna file a new plan? Will they be filing a plan for this?
For us?
No, just to construct this house. Do they have to file?
To construct the house, you'll have to provide a set of plans.
Yeah, we need to show the septic system and all that.
Okay, will they get filed with registry of deeds? Because what will happen is, I presume that the assessor will then get that information, and then they will go through the process of combining the lot. It's one tax ID.
Okay, yeah.
I think that's it, yeah.
Cool. Anything else? Questions from the board? Devin, does that answer some of the concerns?
I think it answers all my concerns.
Good. Okay. Mike?
Good to go.
Midora?
I'm good.
Don?
I'm good.
Good. I'd like to thank our two counselors on the board, who were very astute in picking up the merger doctrine, even though it didn't apply to this case. Very good of you both. We applaud that.
Not a real estate attorney.
Anybody in the public who's here for 71 River Road? Rich, do you have any comments as our town planner with regard to this?
The plan, the lots can be merged just by a perimeter plan. I think we did talk about that in the emails before, because they're all held in common ownership, so they can just file the perimeter plan, new deed, and then that, excuse me, that could be submitted to the building department prior to getting the building permit. So it really won't, it's not much of a lift for the survey to do that for you guys.
Okay.
Just a clarification, the merger doctrine, there already existed the merger doctrine.
Say again?
I said that the merger doctrine was already in play.
Yeah.
So it already existed, because it was three lots that are substandard.
So, for the record, it did apply.
For the record, what?
For the record, it did apply. Is that what?
The merger doctrine did apply, and that's why...
When you say the merger doctrine did apply, is they own two lots?
So there's three lots.
But they own two. They were going to purchase the third.
No.
You don't own either one of the three. Okay, okay. My mistake, okay.
Therefore, the merger doctrine applies.
Yes, would apply.
For the record.
Correct. Matter of fact, there's actually case law out there that names Mr. Luciano with regard to the merger doctrine.
He's sending you a bill, my friend.
That's right, that's right.
But it doesn't apply to what we, our purview. Our purview is F4B, which has nothing to do with the merger doctrine.
Correct. But we want to give our counselors some, you know...
But it helps the analysis.
So keep your bill, Mr. Luciano.
With that said, could I have a motion to close the public hearing for 71 River Road?
So moved.
A second, a second. Any discussion? Okay. But I think we have another hearing after this, which is the enclave, so... Oh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Sorry about that. We have another public hearing at 7 o'clock for the Village Green, the enclave. Maybe we should see how long that goes, and if we can deliberate this after that, that'd be great. If not, we can deliberate. We have a meeting next week, we could deliberate next week. And I think the applicant is okay with either of those. Obviously, the sooner the better. Okay? Thank you. All right. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Amy, do you want to ask our other counselors to come on in? Yes. Lots of counselors.
Chris?
Yes.
When I recuse myself, I wasn't planning on coming back.
Okay.
Because it'll take, this'll take probably about 40 minutes.
Yeah. We can, we can probably deliberate this next. Did you get a chance to review the tape?
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
Then maybe we'll see how this goes. We'll probably deliberate next week then.
Amy about just reviewing minutes, but unless you want to call me, okay, and I'll drive back, then you have to wait.
Let's see what time it is, okay? And if we do it next week, we can do it always next week as well. Okay? Thanks, Don.
Do I recuse myself after you open it?
It's actually open, so you can, you can, you don't have to go on the record. You've recused yourself already. So you can dismiss yourself quietly and move on. Thank you.
Love seeing you.
It was good to have you again.
Don't let the door hit you.
You have everything.
And I think there's a sign-in sheet for those that are here, right, Amy? That they can sign in?
I didn't bring a sign-in sheet.
You didn't bring a sign-in sheet?
No, but...
We know everybody.
Chris, are we still on? I think we are. Okay, great. Good evening again. It's now 7:10, and we are going to continue the public hearing for the enclave at Village Green. Before we do that, I just want to take a moment to congratulate Sean Reardon and his son. His son placed ninth, I think, and eighth in Giant Slalom and Slalom Racing in the state MIAA meet today.
Wow, congratulations.
Fantastic. Good for you. At this time, I will turn the hearing over to either John Smalek or Tom DePlacido. Maybe you can, I think it's been a long time since you folks have been here for this, so you may want to just refresh everybody's memory. Amy, do you have the latest plan for up on the screen? Great. Go ahead, Tom.
Yes. Hello?
She said don't touch the floor of the screen.
Okay. All right. Good evening. After the record, my name is Tom DePlacido, project manager for the enclave at Norfolk, and it has been quite some time since we've been here. But we've been working quite a bit to improve the plan from the concept that we've had and come up with full engineering designs. Just to bring the board up to date with things, as far as other boards in the town, we have actually filed with Conservation Commission based on the new engineering plans that, and site plan that's before the board here tonight with that. We have a March 13 tentative hearing on that, and looking for, you know, the reviews and what comes from that. I'm not going to get into some of the conservation things and some of the other Tetra Tech letter responses and stuff that we have. I'll let the engineers talk about that. But to bring the board up to date with things, and just sort of officially submit it on the record here, we do have a response letter from Tetra Tech, been working with our consultants at Bowler, and it looks like we've addressed most of the concerns, and, you know, what's remaining is smaller items that could be addressed in the final set of plans. And just over today also, just sort of a follow-up letter from Green International on traffic. That was submitted to the board as well, but by email, but just a clean copy to submit here tonight. And since Bill Scully couldn't make it tonight, and obviously, since BETA hasn't had a chance to review it or anything, just to refresh everybody's memory with things, the original proposal was 56 units. According to this letter, the traffic was originally based on 56 townhouses and not age-restricted. Going to 40 units of age-restricted resulted in a much lower estimate of traffic in the traffic studies there, almost 50%, lower on things with traffic. So there was a great reduction with that. And, you know, with the site entrance at the same location, and pretty much everything else remaining the same, and some of the improvements we're doing with overlay Village Green and sidewalks, and actually a sidewalk out to Route 115 through Cleveland Street, and also some of the improvements that we're going to try for across in the river with a walkway. You'll see in his letter here that some of the reduction that may happen with people walking isn't even accounted for in this. So there's going to be, I think, a significant improvement on traffic and things, and not only that, but also on the infrastructure that leads into the project as well. So this is something that has to be reviewed, but just once again, just sort of a overall, sort of bring everything up to date where we're at with everything, so the board knows. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Randy with Bowler to talk about the site plan subdivision, where we're at, and I can walk through some of the changes and things. And then, from there, we're going to walk and have Matt Murva go for landscaping and some of the revisions and stuff that, as a result of the sidewalks and stuff. So I'll turn it over to those guys.
Randy Myron with Bowler Engineering. As Tom had mentioned, this is the proposal now. It's 40 age-restricted units consisting of 20 buildings, sorry, with a cul-de-sac that measures approximately 1,325 feet long. Each one of the, each one of the units, each one of the four units is on an individual lot, and also has an individual septic system. We've placed the buildings at least 25 feet apart. We are also maintaining that 50-foot buffer that exists along the top here. We are also proposing, per your request, there's a wetland crossing in the back of the site that ties into the existing cart path, which leads to Juniper Lane. There's some additional, there's an additional exhibit we can show you, but we're thinking that this wetland crossing would be something like a, some type of wooden boardwalk raised off the wetland to allow plants and water to flow underneath it. In addition to that, we are also still maintaining that conservation restriction area in the back of the site, and as Tom had mentioned, we are meeting with the Conservation Commission on March 13th, and we're actively working that with natural heritage. I guess the other thing I wanted to point out is that we're also, we're subdividing off a small little sliver of the property to, I think this is 16 Village Green right here, in order to make 16 Village Green compliant from a lot area perspective. Matt Murva will touch, real quickly, or will touch on some of the amenities and some of the landscaping that are being created, so I'll just kind of, I'm going to dive into some of the grading, drainage, and utilities that are being proposed as part of the project. There was a stormwater management report that was filed as part of the submission, which demonstrates that we are complying with the DEP's stormwater management standards. We're reducing runoff rates and volumes. We are also adding some recharge, improving water quality. In general, there's two main drainage areas. One of them is in the back of the site here, in this area, where there's a couple infiltration basins, as well as a sediment four bay. Those basins collect the large majority of the runoff from the site and treat it. Really, I'd say, almost 90% of the site is collected within those basins, and they're then equipped with a, there's a riprap overflow spillway that discharges them to the wetlands. There's also an underground infiltration basin proposed up near Village Green Street in that area. That area collects, really, the runoff from the, I guess you'd call it, like, the entryway to the site, and it's designed to capture and collect the 100-year storm before it would then overflow out into the Village Green Street right-of-way. We've also designed the grading to be a somewhat balanced site from a cut-fill perspective. There's also, as I mentioned, there's some individual septic systems that are being proposed. There's some, the plans include, like, a schematic layout of the leach fields and the septic tanks associated with each one of the units. We've done, we've done quite a bit of witness soil testing with the Board of Health, and I believe there was at least one perk and one deep test done on each one of these 40 lots that was witnessed by Wade over at the Board of Health. All of the results indicated acceptable stuff that was per Title V standards. I believe all the perk rates were less than 20 minutes an inch, with the exception of a few lots. Of course, we will be submitting septic system plans as we get further down the road to the Board of Health, and we're also in the process of trying to schedule some more testing with them to kind of finalize things from a septic perspective. In addition, there's also, you know, there's new underground water, underground propane, and underground electric services that are servicing each one of the units. That's generally it, in terms of, I guess, grading, drainage, and utility perspective. I don't know if, did you folks want me to run through Sean's letter, or...
Probably let Sean do it. Do you, I think, have Sean run through his letter? Yeah. Well, Sean goes through that.
Okay. I'll turn it over to Matt Murva, just to kind of run through some of the landscaping.
Thanks, Randy. Matt Murva with Bowler also. Randy hit a lot of the high points already, so I won't take up too much time, but just wanted to point out a few items on the updated plan. Very similar in concept to what you've already seen, but we did have a sidewalk a few months back with members of the board, and incorporated a lot of that feedback into how we treated the buffers, how we made the pathway connections, and so just wanted to point out that we've added a low stone wall entry feature at the entry to Village Green Street. We've also looked at some additional landscaping on the opposite side of Village Green, which we can get into in the next enlargement plan. But entering through kind of a tree-lined boulevard, we've enhanced the landscape at those edges and included some evergreen trees to help screen from the abutting properties there as well. We've got the, we've narrowed the roadway down a bit here, so now from the edge of this house to the edge of the roadways, approximately 84 feet here, which includes some of the natural vegetation that exists, but we're also enhancing that buffer with additional planting. And then on the other side of the street here, approximately 78 feet from the edge of pavement to that house, again, some of that includes the existing natural vegetation, but also enhancing the buffer along there with some select evergreen tree locations. Randy already mentioned the existing wooded buffer that would be in this zone, that 50-foot zone. We're also proposing additional evergreen vegetation along that edge to help further screen that area. And then the maintenance plan for the overall project, you can see this dark green area, that's, that'll be a no-mow meadow conservation seed mix that will be at the buffer to the property. That would eventually just be left to grow more wild and not be maintained lawn, so we will further enhance that buffer along that edge as well. From the parking area here, there's some overflow visitor parking there. We've got about 64 feet to the nearest property line at that location, and then another 138 feet from there to the existing home at that abutters property there. So just wanted to run through some of those dimensions with you. And then the corner of this building is about 53 feet from the nearest property line, and another 105 feet to the existing home there. So those were some of the things that came up on the sidewalk. We wanted to enhance those buffers a bit, pull back units where we could, and enhance the existing vegetation that was out there. I think Randy already mentioned the pathway connection, but subject to further discussions with CONCOM, that will be our crossing for pedestrian connection from this village out to Juniper Lane. So again, that's our proposed connection that just needs a little further review by CONCOM. We've updated our lighting and landscape plans. Those are included with the package that you've received. Glad to go into those in more detail. If you don't mind flipping to the next page, Amy. Great. Oh, that was, perfect. So this just shows an enlargement of the stone entry walls on Village Green Street. This is within the cul-de-sac. We have a little seating area, it's kind of an amenity for the residents, some benches and special paving, kind of an enhanced landscape in that zone. And then we've updated our prototypical planting for each of the two unit types. So those are shown on sheet C33, and those would all be in your package as well. The next slide, if you don't mind? So we've also looked at, this is the view, basically from the entry drive, we'd be standing in the entry drive to our project in this view, looking at the abutter across the street in kind of a before and after view, adding some evergreen vegetation on the planted berm there that will help to screen any additional headlight glare. There's already a pretty decent planted berm there, that the grade does come up a couple of feet, but we will enhance that with some additional evergreen vegetation. Next slide. And then this is the updated lighting plan. These are eight-foot-six posts that would run along the proposed cul-de-sac, and basically one lamp post per each duplex building, really to provide some wayfinding light. It's not very high-level lighting. It's pretty residential in scale, as you can see, typical of what you'd see outside of a typical single-family home. So those are dispersed throughout the, throughout the project there. Other than that, there would be basically a sconce light on the garage and a small deck light off the side of the rear, the rear decks. So that's essentially our lighting scheme. I think that might be the last slide, if you don't mind clicking one more. Oh, no, it wasn't the last one. And then these are just some images of what that pathway connection might look like across the wetland here, where we're proposing the connection. Again, this was something we looked at in the field, tried to find the best location. We'd still need to field-verify this, and again, work it through with Conservation Commission, but that would be our intent to create a small boardwalk over the wetlands there to make that pedestrian connection from the village up to Juniper Lane. Any questions regarding landscape?
Well, probably, go ahead, Dan.
The, those lamp posts, are those going to be in the right-of-way, or are they going to be on individual property, individual lots?
They're on the individual lots.
Okay. Because they look pretty close to the pavements. Could you go back to that slide? Was I maybe misreading the slide? Are those orange dots the lamp posts?
Yeah, they're, can you zoom in on that a little bit? Right, the orange dots are the lamp posts. This is the right-of-way line, so it's just outside of that. It's maybe two feet off the property line.
Okay.
Right-of-way line.
Are those metered on a, on a, an HOA meter or something?
I believe those would be HOA-metered, and they'd be on a photo cell that would shut them off after hours, but have them on from dusk. But those wouldn't be on the individual homeowners, I believe.
We're still, we'll have to make that decision on that. They may be on the homeowners and part of it. Basically, on a photo cell, and separately chained for, would be show them on. Just looking at a few over there that may be some distances, a little further apart, if it, you may end up having a couple more lamp posts around the office besides the private one. This is the first couple coming in. Yes, the lamp posts would probably be on each individual.
And that actually leads to my other question about the ownership. Is, is this going to be condominium-type ownership?
It'll be, so it'll actually be a public road owned by the town, but the...
We need the microphone.
Can we give, yeah, Tom?
The public way would be owned by the town. Each lot would be owned by each individual homeowner, and then it'll be managed by an HOA that each homeowner would be a member of.
So what's the HOA for, though? Is there any common areas?
Well, you're going to have, actually, maintenance of coming in, the main entryway. You have landscaping around that. You'll have the mailroom area, not a mailroom, but mailbox area that's going to have to be shoveled, maintained. You'll need some liability insurance, somebody to sand it, salt it in the winter, plow it out, because I know the town won't plow out the little parking areas and things as well. So there'll be quite a few miscellaneous little things like that that'll have to fall under some type of HOA.
Okay.
Do the retention areas require maintenance? In other words, would that fall under the HOA as well?
Typically, at a, when the town owns a road, those actually would be part of the town maintenance with it. In past subdivisions, actually in Norfolk here, I actually have given the HOA, you know, the ability to go in and mow it, maintain it, and take care of it, so it looks good with everything. But, you know, the ultimate responsibility, if something did fail, would probably come back on the town with that.
Can you actually, on that topic, can you actually show us where the, can you zoom in where these detention basins are going to be and where the access is going to be, so that the DPW can actually access these things?
Yep. I think this is a decent slide to do it. So these are, these are the basins here, and this is the access to those. So we can, we can go back to the color plan, if you don't mind. It might show it a little better. If you can zoom in on that. Yeah, so this is the drainage basin access road, so that gets you to each of these two basins right there.
Is there another basin to the right?
Yes.
And where's the boardwalk? Where's the path that's going to cross the wetland?
That's right down at the end of this.
That's right here?
Yep.
Okay. And then on the other side, where does that... Okay, and then on the other side, where does that path go?
As you continue to the south, that's going to connect right up to Juniper Lane here.
But there's a house there, so how, how, just practically speaking, how is that going to work? How, how are people going to be able to access Juniper Lane from the...
This, this will be an easement right here for the, the pathway to come through between these two properties essentially, and connect to the cul-de-sac at Juniper Lane.
Is, is that an existing house at the end of Juniper?
This one?
No, to the left?
No, that's a proposed, proposed lot.
But that's part of your 40B site, right? It's not?
No, that's been, that, that's never been part of the 40B site. It's actually a removed house lot that, it was carved out of the area there.
Okay, but you own it?
Norfolk Holdings owns it, correct.
Okay.
And our next meeting, Bill is, you know, obviously Bill's not had a chance to review these yet, but our next meeting, which I think is next week, the sixth, Bill, you'll, you'll be able to actually hopefully peer review the landscaping and...
Yeah.
Okay, okay. Any questions from Matt, for the, for the board, before Sean reviews the engineering, talks about engineering?
I'll let Sean go first.
Okay. Anything from Matt? Okay, Sean, you're up.
So again, Sean Riordan from Tetra Tech, the, the ZBA is Review Consultant for Civil Engineering Issues. So, yeah, we received the January twenty-fifth plans back on around January twenty-fifth, and issued a comment letter February fourteenth. We identified about thirty-some-odd issues that needed to be addressed, and we subsequently got a submittal back from the applicant addressing each of our concerns. Most of them were addressed, there was a, a couple outstanding minor items that, that could be addressed pretty quickly and, or otherwise could be addressed in a, a condition of approval. Most of our items were sort of bookkeeping issues that we would like to see addressed as part of the final plans, but there were some more substantive things that warrant a little bit of discussion. First was, we, we wanted clarification that the town, that the plan of the, the proposal would be to have eventual acceptance of the roadways by the town, in which case, everything should be designed to subdivision specifications. The subdivision requires a minimum two-and-a-half-inch binder course for the town roadways. Given that this is a higher density, we recommend the ZBA consider requiring a slightly more robust binder course, so three inches instead of two-and-a-half inches. Shouldn't make a substantive difference in the overall cost, but it will make a, a little bit more, longer life cycle for that pavement, given that there's additional density than otherwise would normally be in the, in a subdivision this size. We also had, there, I don't know if you all remember way back, originally there was a boulevard section in the, in the project. It sort of shrunk down to a thirty-foot roadway section that shrunk down further to a twenty-four-foot roadway section. Our opinion was that the thirty-foot extra-wide section, as you entered the site, really, really wasn't necessary, that twenty-four feet was more than enough to, to give the fire trucks access and to provide safe accommodation through there. And since it was pretty much just a straight section of road that didn't have any houses on it, it's our opinion that we'd be better off having it twenty-four feet rather than having it thirty feet wide, and particularly when you approach a pedestrian crossing that's coming down a little further down the road. And I believe the applicant has agreed to make that change. We had a, a small recommendation to, if you could, Amy, put up the site plan. There's what we call a speed table, or a, a raised crosswalk. If you keep going forward a little bit. Any, any of the plans, keep going. Yeah, there we go. Yeah, that's a better plan. So, so in this location here, they're proposing a, a crossing of the road, which is a, which called a speed table, so an elevated crossing. We recommend that they, they move that a little closer to the entry, so that it would be in view of the traffic as it came down the street, and they've agreed to make that change. And actually, I think Randy mentioned their septic system, so each one of these, each one of the duplexes, so each building will have two septic systems, and as you can imagine, the sites are pretty tight. They've shown the right-size septic system, they've shown a septic tank, so they've shown that it's, it's achievable in each of the lots as defined, but as they get into the final design, you know, things might get a little bit tighter and a little bit harder to fit. So just a risk going forward, but it's not your risk, it's their risk, because they're going to have to prove that on the sites that they have defined, that they can cite a septic system in each location. But what they've shown is based on a fair amount of data, they've done test pits in each location, so it's, they're not just guessing at it. They're, they're, they're well-informed and they're appropriately sized based on the information that they've got. The other thing that was kind of unique, at least in my experience, is the underground propane tanks. So I know they've mentioned that they've spoken to the fire chief, and the fire chief is okay with it. What we recommend is some sort of a, a permanent marker be installed, just so that in case anybody's digging, that it's, it's not something that they find by accident. It would be nice to have a little bit permanent marker for any of these underground propane storage tank locations. As Randy mentioned, they did submit a stormwater report. We issued about a dozen to fifteen comments, maybe even a few more. Most of those are engineering-related comments, sort of just making sure that they do everything properly. One of the more significant things that we identified was that the infiltration rates that they're using are a little bit more robust than otherwise might be allowed. They do have enough space to adjust in the design. What we've asked is that they adjust those numbers in the final plans. They'll also have to address that during Conservation Commission review, so what we, what we request is that they take care of that, so when their final plans are submitted to you guys, we'll check that and make sure that they've, they've addressed it. The other issue is, some of the project site is located in priority habitat, so we just wanted confirmation that they're working with Natural Heritage to address that issue, which they've given us a, a file number, and we've asked for final documentation from them as part of their final submittal. And then the last thing that's probably of, of substance is, is there's going to be a lot of work on these units, and Village Green and Cleveland Street are, you know, subject to get some damage, so what we'd like is a conditions assessment prior to the start of construction, and then an agreement from the applicant that they'll at least repair anything, any damage that they've done. From what I understand, that they've offered to overlay the street. We'd still like the conditions assessment done, because there might be more damage than is fixed just by an overlay, there might be some full-depth reconstruction that needs to happen in order to, to repair some of the areas. But all in all, they've, they've responded to each of our requests, they've either addressed our request, or otherwise agreed to show it on the final plans, and we thought that was appropriate.
And do you have any questions, John?
Yeah, sure. Sean, just on the drainage issues that you raised, you had a few comments on soil testing, the data that wasn't supplied, some of the deep hole test data. You had a question about one of the soil, soil character, like, soil categories was, was incorrect, that would require a slower infiltration rate.
Right.
Did they provide all of that corrected data, and, and was there, were there any revisions made to the stormwater system as a result of that?
At current, there were no, there were no revisions since the, the plans we reviewed, but the, the items that we've addressed in our letter are, are relatively straightforward to address, and they shouldn't result in changes to the plans. So none of them should be, in addressing them in the final plans, we'll, we'll check the final plans, but those changes are not likely to create changes in the building layout or create changes in the roadway layout.
But, but a couple of them, I, I thought you didn't have the groundwater elevation data for...
Again, that's a, a modification that we think, once they do have the data, we wouldn't expect it to vary the system very much. But in, in order to comply with the standards, they need to provide that information. So they, they do have a fair amount of information on the site.
Okay.
So some of these things, if, if, if it were a, a more densely developed site, or if we thought they were more aggressive with their designs, they've been pretty conservative and pretty robust with most of their designs, that we think they can address all of these things through the Conservation Commission process and in the final plan, without any changes that would drive reductions in units or changes in layout of the roadway. But we would definitely need to see them as part of the final plan.
Okay.
Questions from the board?
Couple of questions. I'll start with, because I'm talking about stormwater. I looked at the stormwater map, and it appears to not include what appears to be some drainage area upstream of the development on, if you're looking at the plan, the top-left area. I'm just not sure why that was not included, or if that area even is tributary to the development area. I'd just like some further clarification on that. It was an item I included on my March fourth, twenty-eighteen letter.
I can answer that, but I'd like to hear Randy's answer.
I guess, can you, can you clarify which area you're, you're referring to, the top...
Amy, can you bring the map up?
Yeah.
So the, the watershed map appears to just follow this limited work line right here, and just looking at the contours, to, to me, it kind of looks like this whole area up here may be tributary to your site. I just want to make sure that i- if this does actually contribute to your site, if that's included, just to ensure that if it does enter your stormwater systems, that they're properly designed.
Actually, Randy, let me take this, because we looked at this. So that, that was, they've actually, and you might not know this because it's kind of a fine detail, but they've actually designed a little ridge, so when they're grading, what they're doing is they're, they're, they're taking that area that flows towards the property and directing it around the property, so it never ends up collecting in the, the proposed system. So they've, they've diverted around the undeveloped portion of the property. Here.
No, I, I know what you're saying.
Yeah.
But also, if you're diverting the water, you're changing the flow path, and you would have to include that in your actual report itself.
There's a swell that runs along here, so we're diverting that, this water, so it doesn't go into our basin, there's, because there's a swell that runs around, along, around the limits of the property, the limits of the development?
No, I, I understand what you're saying now, but if you're diverting the water, you're changing the flow path of that stormwater, and that's something that has to be included in your report.
Yeah, we can, we can take a look at the volumes. The, the fortunate thing is, they don't need to do anything to mitigate for changes in surface area for that flow, but we'll check to make sure that the flow pass...
I just want to make sure it's, it's accounted for in the final report.
We'll, we'll take, we'll take a look at that.
Okay. Another couple of issues, and these were also issues I had raised before, or actually, sorry, this one I hadn't raised before, just, I, I looked at the cross slope, or lack thereof, on the gravel access, and I just want to make sure that the applicant was maybe proposing some sort of cross slope on that gravel access road to those basins, to ensure there'd be no washout on that gravel access road.
I'll just say that, I mean, the plans are preliminary, we can, we can add some spot grades to the, to the final plans, to ensure that...
Or just something on the, on the detail.
We, we want a typical section for that access road, when it's fully developed.
Yeah, well, there, there was a detail, I just wanted to make sure that that was, that it was clear there was a cross slope on that on the final plans. Also, just another thing for the final plans, just to be able to see that speed table, to ensure that no cars are bottoming out or anything like that. And also...
Excuse me, she's asking me to use that microphone, sorry.
There was a detail, the speed table, within the plans.
Do you know what sheet it was on?
I can check, hang on.
While you're looking for that detail, one, one of the other things related to the speed table that I had written down on my letter is, Tom, as far as adding additional lights, probably a good idea to add a light at both sides of that speed table crossing.
Yes? Those are just the markings.
Well, he showed something different up there a moment ago.
Oh, did I?
You had something else up there?
C-31.
C-31?
Yep. This is the raised, raised speed table, it's ju, it's actually just three inches high, so cars shouldn't bottom.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
And then just my last comment, it, it appeared that a lot of the ADA spaces were not ADA-compliant with their spot grades as they're shown on the plans. I want to make sure that those final plans, all those spaces are ADA-compliant.
Okay. Could we talk about those spaces a bit? Because, you know, one of the complications with the town accepting the road, the town typically doesn't accept parking spaces off of the road, so part of those spaces within the public right-of-way, who's going to be responsible for clearing them and plowing them under the, so maybe if we could just talk about that for a minute, Tom? I mean, I don't know, are the, the visitor space, are they visitor spaces? Are they handicap spaces?
Make you what I have to draw on.
They're kind of a unique feature, I, I've never seen them sort of added on a...
As opposed to...
As a cul-de-sac road.
Opposed to parallel parking?
No, as opposed to people using the driveways. The driveways are pretty long. These, they all have garages, right? I, I wouldn't expect to see as many sort of supplemental parking spaces off of the road.
Up in this area right here, obviously we have enough spaces there, there's forty units for two or three cars to park, actually, you know, to pick up mail and things like that. That's becoming more and more common since the US Postal Service doesn't...
Okay.
...allow mailboxes in new subdivisions anymore, they all have to be central mailbox-location units with that. So what would happen with this is, that would be one of the areas that the HOA would be responsible for, even though it's in the right-of-way, very similar to, you know, this section of the driveway here. The town isn't going to plow that, you know, the, actually, the, the HOA would plow that if it was an individual house.
Okay.
The homeowner would plow it. You are right, the driveways are quite a bit longer. I think these parking spaces are necessary here, obviously, for the mail area. We did put a couple of additional ones down over here, just, you know, parking spaces, basically, there's a little bit more denser development in here, so that, you know, there's some additional parking area for a Super Bowl party or something like that during the holidays. They just don't, they're not as spread out, and there's not as much parallel parking space.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, now, Joe?
No, I'm okay.
Mike?
I'm good.
Again, as I said, the landscaping and the traffic study we'll review next week, but Bill has a chance to review that. I'd like to open it up to the public, if they've got some concerns with the engineering portion that they've seen so far.
I just have one question.
Sure. State your name and grab the mic. I think you're the individual who's going to get the, they're going to...
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Brad Walker, sixteen Village Green.
I just had a question, so you're going to be planting new trees behind the abutters on that side? You're not going to use the existing trees there because you're going to take out all that land, is that why you're putting new trees in?
No, we're, we're keeping a lot of the existing vegetation along that edge.
Okay.
But we are adding a few additional trees below, you can see the, the dark green strip of existing vegetation to remain, so we're just adding some additional evergreens, because a lot of that material's not evergreen, it's deciduous, so we're, we're adding some evergreens to help with some additional buffering up there.
Okay. I know at one point there was a discussion that there was, there might be some land that was taken out, not land, but earth that was taken out to level out, out back there. So is there, is it going to, if that's still the case, is it going to be gradual, or is there any drop-offs behind any of the, is it behind any of the, or, you know, on that other side of Village Green?
Sure. Randy can probably speak to the grading a little bit, but there won't be any change to the grade within that fifty feet of wooded area. It's just, on our side of that wooded area, we will be dropping the grade down, but that, that fifty-foot swath remains at its existing grade.
Got it. Okay. Yeah, I'd, I'd seen some plan that showed a fence back there, like a chain-link fence it looked like, so I wasn't exactly sure what that was for behind there. Are you aware of any, there was ever any kind of chain-link, chain-link fence that was proposed?
So there's actually a, there's a, there's a little retaining wall, this area here, there's a...
There's a chain-link fence proposed along that wall, just as like a means of fall protection.
Okay. How far is that drop-off?
The retaining wall itself, I think it's four or five feet high at its maximum height.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yep.
And Randy, I think there's one more wall, sort of near the cul-de-sac, behind the, the houses that are closest to the, the buffer strip?
There's, the, the other wall is... There's, the o-, the other wall is-
Right in this area here.
Kind of around that basin.
I could, I could be wrong, but isn't there a small one here, too?
Oh, yes, there is, there is a small one there. Yes.
And in the plan, you'll identify, those, we're going to require field-stone walls for those? Are you going to design that, or do you have a plan for that yet?
We would provide some details within the, within the final plans with-
They will be a field-stone wall. We will, we will require field-stone face, okay?
Okay.
There, I think the detail currently shows them as like a modular block wall-
Yeah.
-but let's put that in the, make sure that goes in the condition. We, we did identify a constructibility issue with one of the walls, which they agreed to address, but definitely, they're shown as, I think, a modular block wall on the, on the plans.
Right, like a versalock.
So, we'll make sure we clarify that.
I'm giving them the hint, it's going to be a field-stone wall. Okay. Matt, is, I know one of the things that, do you have a detail, and I didn't look at, do you have a detail, I think we're going to do the sidewalk, Tom, is going to be at the street, at the street edge, where you're not going to have a three-foot strip. Do you have a detail of that already, Matt, on this, on your plan, as far as the sidewalk?
Meaning?
Because the sidewalk isn't going to conform to a normal subdivision, we're going to actually have it at the street edge.
Are, are you talking about on Village Green?
On Village, on Village Green, going down to Cleveland, Cleveland to 115.
I believe that's right up against the curb.
Correct.
Yeah, vertical bitumenous berm, and then the walk right behind that.
Okay.
Is that on the, the plan yet?
No.
No?
I just want to get a copy of that to Bob McGee, who's the DPW Director, just so we, we have him on board. I know at some point, and I don't know if it's going to be during his development or after his development, he has got Cleveland Street slated as being repaved. So, we might want to coordinate the paving of both these projects at the same time.
Just back to the, the wall question. Field stone, are you talking like a natural stacked, dry-laid?
Field-stone face, field-stone face.
Okay. Because they make modular walls that come in a variety of, you know, stone types, that if, if we showed you a sample, could we, could we look at something that's-
I, I, and I won't speak for the whole board, I think we, we looked at this with 106, 108 Main Street-
Yep.
-and I think we agreed on a, on a field-stone face there.
Like a veneer on a concrete?
Yeah, if you see that one, it's very similar to that, does the board agree pretty much?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So, you could use the 106, 108 Main Street as your guide with regard to that. The other concern I had in it, it's on, and I don't know if it's required, I think it may come out in the conservation, on the boardwalk, when it goes over the stream, are we going to have any rails on that section where it does go over the water, so that, God forbid, no one does fall into that stream? I know it's not a deep stream, but it's just an area where, since they're going over water, are we going to have any kind of vertical guard rail there?
It, it's not proposed, I mean, most of the boardwalks are just open, and this is only probably going to be 18 inches, or, you know, something like that, off the, off the height of the ground. It'll be up to conservation, how they want to, how they want to handle it, but generally, most boardwalks are, are open, like that, almost like a, like a dock, or, you know, as the pictures had shown with everything. I just, I just think maintenance-wise in the future and stuff, you're just looking at railings and things that get loose, you know, especially out in the middle of the woods, maintenance, everything with it. I know wood is sort of the preferred type of thing to go over a stream with it, but I just look at that, that it's ongoing maintenance and stuff in the future, 10 years down the road, 15 years down the road or something with it. It's just, I, I just see problems with railings.
Okay. And the maintenance of the boardwalk, is that going to be by the HM, the homeowners' association?
If it's open to the public with that, then that'd be a public access with, with things. If it's a public road, and it's a public trail that the town's going to be responsible for, then that'd be something that the town would be liable for. So, if it's limited to just people in the project that can use it, then yes, then they would be responsible for it. Once you open it up to everybody in the public, then I think it's, you know, a public benefit and a public responsibility.
You may want to talk a little more about that, because I think I, I would want to see a material that's going to withstand a long period of time. So, I guess, you know, a boardwalk made out of wood is not going to sustain one that if I require you to do it out of diamond plate steel, so we may want to talk about that a little further. I would want to make that-
Yeah, I agree with you 100 percent.
Okay.
And one of the, one of the things that we're working with is that it is a natural heritage area-
Okay.
-and they're going to look for most minimal impact as possible. I mean, ideally, I, you know, I'd like to see some type of, you know, you know, a small culvert or span or something like that, that's concrete and just, you know, earth going over, but I don't think that's going to fly with natural heritage.
Okay.
So, we, we've got natural heritage and conservation to deal with on that.
Okay. Great.
Chris, just a real quick question.
I think it's pretty obvious, but I just want to confirm that, because there's one point, do you mind that spot that goes out to Rockwood Road?
Just didn't know if there was-
We, we did talk about that when we walked the site. There, there really is no viable way through there without crossing over private property, from, from what I understand. This, this is the, the best, most direct route to get out to a public way without crossing into land that, that we don't control.
I've got a couple, yeah, kind of lingering questions from my old notes. I, I was just going through my notes from previous hearings, and just want to make sure we've addressed all these design issues. Have, do we know what the water pressure is, existing water pressure in the neighborhood? Is there, as, do we need to contact the water department to make sure there's no issues there?
It's been a while, I, I, I can't remember whether they issued a letter with that or not. I'd have to double-check with everything. I don't know, Amy, if you, if you have something with it there?
Actually, do you have something with that, Randy?
I don't have the letter with me, but they did issue a letter indicating that pressures are sufficient.
Okay, so we have something in our file?
We do. Yep.
Oh, great. Yeah.
There we go. Yep.
Yeah, importantly, that, that opinion was issued based on data provided by the, the applicant, so it, it wasn't just, yeah, everything's fine. It was based on the information provided, they did fire-flow tests, they had the data that, that supported that position as well.
The applicant did a fire-flow test?
As part of the earlier iteration of the project-
Yep.
-which had, which was, which is higher density, higher use. So, as part of this, we, we extrapolated that the, the needs of this project would be less than the needs of the one that they had evaluated earlier.
Okay. All right. There's a traffic letter that came in from Green International, basically saying what we, what we knew, that the, the trip generation would be less, delays would be less. There isn't any discussion about the level of service issue at Cleveland Street, which I know was going from an E to D or an E to an F. I think Jason had told us a while ago that even with age restricted, it would still deteriorate to an F, but not as bad as a non-age-restricted project would be. Jason had also advised us a while ago that we could have a condition in the permit that would require monitoring, and if, if things were worse than we thought, there could be some trigger for, for mitigation, such as, you know, construction of a sidewalk, maybe on Village Green, or something like that, or maybe some contribution to a sidewalk fund.
No, we will have a sidewalk on Village Green. We'll actually have a sidewalk on Village Green and on Cleveland Street, down to the existing sidewalk on Rockwood Road.
Who's paying for that?
Thomas.
Oh, that's going to be a condition? Okay.
Yeah. So, that's one mitigation they've done already-
Great.
-to Olivia, as well as the, the path that will go to Juniper, to also help that.
So, when is that work going to be done, though? Is that after this project's built, or what's?
Actually, it'll probably be done during construction. We can come up with a timeline after maybe so many units. Actually, to tell you the truth, the Village Green sort of overlay and things like that, I'd probably want to get that done fairly soon, just because if you're trying to market homes and things in there, you want to have an attractive entrance, and sometimes I think a sidewalk actually helps with that, too, if you have a sidewalk going out to a Main Street. So, I think there'd be some coordination with the DPW to get that done, but I'm leaning towards more on the earlier side of the project, you know, maybe after the first 20 units or something, or 10 units that would all be completed, you know? It's going to be coordinated when the DPW does Cleveland, for sure. We don't want to be out there putting a sidewalk in when, you know, they just put a new overlay, a new top coat on the road and everything. We'd like to try to coordinate that with them. So, that's going to happen relatively soon, that would have to be coordinated with them, and I'm looking at the, definitely by the first half of the project, we'd have most of that stuff done.
Okay, so, so aside from that, in the, in the boardwalk, is there any other off-site mitigation that we've talked about?
Sidewalks, the, no, just those so far.
Okay.
The boardwalk might be more in the, the second, third, or something like that, if we do the sidewalks in the first third of the project.
Right. And then architectural review, we-
I think you're going to have those for us for next week as well, there, for the design.
Yeah, we're going to, we will have to, I don't know if that's going to give Glenn enough time to review things and stuff, because he hasn't even seen anything new on this yet.
Have you given us drawings? Do we have elevations and?
I believe there were some submitted before, that are similar to what was done, but we do have one different floor plan in here that we'll have to submit some, some architecturals for.
I don't think we have a new set to the new, to the new plan, so we probably need a new set to the new plan.
Yes, yes.
I'll talk to Glenn, I'm not sure how quickly he can get him, but if it's not till next week, I suspect he's probably not going to have time to review them for Wednesday.
Yeah, I would, I would agree on that. It'll probably be the following meeting.
And then, in terms of waivers, I know, John, you're working on a waiver list, a revised waiver list? Okay. So, I mean, we should have Sean and Bill review the revised waiver list, you know, give them enough time to review it, then give that feedback to us, and so we can discuss it at that future meeting. I mean, there was some talk of having, end the next meeting next week. So, I'm not sure if that's viable, or-
I think, I think next week, meaning we can probably handle the landscape, the traffic, maybe architecture if they have time, if not, we won't. You had some concerns, Tom, with the waiver list, or?
I, I, I know from our part, we could probably get the waiver list pretty close to revised and submitted by the end of this, you know, by Friday or something, but I just don't think that's enough time to, for Beta to review and things with that, to have any meaningful comments. We've been through the, the subdivision regs and the zoning bylaws recently, so we're pretty familiar with what we may need for this waiver list and everything. So, I don't, I see this very similar to what we mean, what we've had in the past for other waivers, so I think it'll be pretty easy to go through that, it's just a matter of, we're going to have the meeting anyways, maybe there's a chance they can have it reviewed if we can get it to them, you know, Friday or Saturday or something, but that, that's going to be something that will be up to them. It's, it's, it's tight, and I'll understand if you don't have it done.
Yeah, what I would say is, you know, Sean has to review the, the waivers as well, but, you know, if we get them soon enough, we can go through them. We may not have time to produce a letter, but at least we'll be able to speak to them at the next meeting.
Okay. So, do I have a motion to continue the public hearing till next Wednesday, March 6th, at 7:00, here at Town Hall, where we'll be discussing landscape, traffic, possibly the architecture, and possibly, we will start to dive into the waiver list. So, moved?
Yeah, where are we with that?
Well, the 180-day expires at the end of this hearing, so we'll continue that or extend that as well. So, probably the, the second meeting in March.
You've got to speak up, John.
The second meeting in March, probably we'll extend that.
Amy, what's our, what's our calendar for March? We have March 6th, which is next Wednesday.
It's the agenda for March 6th, if you can see the first couple, I think, if they continue.
Yep. 20th? Okay. So, it would be the 20th, would be our follow-up meeting?
For the 180, yeah, for the 180.
Yeah. Okay.
So, just so we know, so what, we're expecting by Wednesday, you expecting a review letter from Beta for landscaping and for-
Review of the traffic, review of the landscaping-
Okay.
-possibly a review of the architecture? Possibly. And then maybe, possibly waivers, start to work into waivers-
Start talking about waivers.
-if we can, start talking about it.
And then March 20th would be the sec-
March 20th would be the second meeting, which will continue, probably, if we don't finish architecture, and/or we'll start delving more detail into the waivers.
Okay.
I'd have to be away on the 20th, that can be a problem.
Say again?
If I have to be away on the 20th, will that be a problem?
Yes. So, cancel your appointment. Okay?
We'll bring Don back.
Okay. We have a second to the motion. You asked a question, we gave you an answer. So, we have a motion to continue the public hearing till the 6th, for the landscape, building, traffic. Mike, so moved, do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have any discussion? All those in favor? Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you. Good seeing you. We want to call, hey, Amy? Amy? Do you want to call Don and say if he wants to come?
Sean, I didn't realize.
71? See if he does. We have enough, but I mean, if he does want to come back, tell him. We do have enough members to deliberate it, but it's up to him, if he wants to join in. If not, we'll let Madora do all the talking.
It'll be quick.
Hey, Chris, can we take a five-minute recess? Hey, Chris, can we take a five-minute recess? Of the full... Of the full...